Good evening, I'm Kathleen Brown, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on the 25th day of February 2025. Thank you to those who have joined us in person and online. At this time, I will ask Madam Clerk to announce the role.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board Chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowenstiel, Mr. Callen, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Dwyer, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. At this time, we will observe a moment of silence tonight. I ask that we observe this moment of silence in honor of Officers Girvin and Reese. Tonight, I would like to welcome the students from Ocean Lakes High School Madrigals and Chorus Director, Mr. Bill Boardman. After the Pledge of Allegiance, they will be singing the National Anthem. Please join me as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, colleagues, that brings us to the adoption of our agenda. A couple of additions. One is Action B related to an appointment of a hearing officer. The other is that Dr. Robertson has requested that we add Information C, and I accept adding that for response to school closures. And then if anybody is interested in adding that as well to Action, I will accept a motion for that at this time. So, the reason being that the request is to change the calendar on March 13th, and that would put us at our March 11th date, but I'm asking my colleagues if you, anybody is interested in making a motion to put that on Action as well as Information at this time. Okay, seeing none, it will just be added to Information. Are there any other modifications to the agenda as presented and modified? Seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the agenda as modified. Moved by Dr. Green, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes, so the motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda as modified.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us now to our superintendent's report.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. Here are a few items of interest for you and our families. February is America's American Heart Month, and I'm proud to say to one of our students who's joining us tonight is the Youth Heart Ambassador for the American Heart Association of Hampton Roads. Abby Larson is a fifth grader at Newcastle Elementary. Abby is standing right here to be recognized, so thank you for being here. Abby courageously shares her story with her classmates about she had two open-heart surgeries as a baby. At Newcastle Elementary and at many of our schools this month, the Kid's Heart Challenge raises awareness about heart defects, CPR training, and healthy living. Abby spoke at several assemblies at her school, encouraging her fellow students to practice healthy habits such as drinking plenty of water, getting plenty of sleep, and avoiding tobacco. She was also interviewed by the local news media and spoke about how she is trained in how to do hands-only CPR. Our students, staff, and families are strong supporters of the American Heart Association's efforts to combat heart disease. So, thank you, Abby, for making us so proud as an ambassador for the American Heart Association. Our students and staff went all out for Virginia Kindness Week earlier this month. The Virginia Department of Education encouraged schools to make special notices of acts of kindness from February 9th through February 15th. This initiative celebrates the fact that kindness makes our schools safe, healthy, and welcoming environments for learning. At Lynnhaven Elementary, staff and students wrote notes about acts of kindness that they witnessed at school. They then put those notes on an act of kindness tree. At Shelton Bark Elementary, students held a food drive for a local food pantry while residents of a nearby senior home sent the school notes with kind messages. Students and staff at other schools volunteered at food banks, collecting socks for families in need, wrote notes to senior home residents, and decorated classroom doors with inspiring messages. The Virginia Department of Education recognized our efforts in a weekly newsletter. It's nice to see statewide attention given to the positive impact students are having in our community. The program Coats for Kids and Books Too was a big success February 5th at the Plaza Annex. Our families received more than 200 coats as well as books, just in time to prepare them for the snowstorm. I'd like to thank those that helped, including Wavy TV 10, Papa John's, our Title I Program, the Office of Family Community Engagement, and United Way of Southampton Roads. Some of you join me, our students and staff, in welcoming Virginia Superintendent of Public Construction, Dr. Lisa Coons, and other leaders as they observed our innovative Biofit classes on February 14th. This interdisciplinary course blends biology and physical education, helping students explore real-world connections between science and movement. With co-teaching and hands-on learning, Biofit is an engaging and fun way to learn. Dr. Coons' visit included stops at a biology classroom, at Lanstown High School, and a PE lesson with Basot High School students held at Williams Farm Recreation Center and Towardwood High School. Our students and staff did a great job showing her how our innovative learning methods are helping students be future-ready. Finally, I'd like to share a local news clip from WTKR showing how our transportation team supported the Special Olympics during the polar plunge earlier this month at the oceanfront. Let's take a look.
I'm Beverly Kidd here at the Virginia Beach Ocean Front where they are setting up for this year's polar plunge, and one of the notable teams is a group of spirited school bus drivers.
We put the word out, and we got this group of people together, and we've been doing it now, this is going on our third year.
This group has been raising money for the past month for the polar plunge to benefit the Special Olympics.
Last year, we raised about 4,000, and we're closing in on that same mark again this year.
Most of the donations came from the 600 beach bus drivers and their families.
We're just very proud and honored to be able to do this, representing all the bus drivers in Virginia Beach.
Pam Coley is a bus driver for special needs students, and she knows how important this event is to the local athletes who participate.
A couple of years ago, I did drive a student who was in the relay, one of the relay races. She was runner, and she benefited from some of the resources.
The polar plunge is the biggest fundraising event for the Special Olympics, bringing in more than $1 million each year. It's held at the Virginia Beach Ocean Front every year in the first week of February, with hundreds of people jumping into the icy Atlantic.
I went in the first time, got out, and then I looked back in. It was really fun.
And a fun time it is. Even if you're not plunging, there's food, music, and adult beverages under a heated tent. Taking a dip for a good cause is what makes these beach bus drivers positively Hampton Roads. In Virginia Beach, Beverly Kidd, WTKR News 3.
I'd like to thank the hundreds of drivers and transportation staff who supported this worthy cause, and they are certainly courageous. So, thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes my report, and I do have some recognitions as well. So, we do have some recognitions tonight for some recent appointments, and we'll start with Latasha Bates. Latasha was previously an assistant, admin assistant at Kempsonville High School, and we are pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for her to be the next Assistant Principal at Renaissance Academy. And I see you have some guests. Welcome. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Ricky Bentoncourt. We're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation. She was previously an avid instructor at Prince Anne High School to now be this Coordinator of Secondary English in the Department of Teaching and Learning. Congratulations. And we see you have some guests. Next up, we have Christopher Harriman, formerly a coordinator of Food Services and Office of Food Services, who is now an Assistant Director in Food Services and the Office of Food Services. Congratulations, Chris. And I see you have some guests. Congratulations. Next up, we have Lori Taylor, formerly a coordinator in Food Services and the Office of Food Services, who is now the Grant Manager in the Office of Budget Development. Congratulations, Lori. And I see you have some guests. Welcome. Thank you. And then finally, we have Gloria Ashley Williams, formerly an instructional specialist in Department of Teaching and Learning, who is now the Coordinator of Academic Support Programs in K-12 in the Department of Teaching and Learning. Congratulations. And I see you have some guests. Outstanding. You know, I'd like to thank all the family and guests of the recognition, recognitions tonight. We, we ask a lot of these individuals, they spend a lot of time doing great work for us, and your support is critically important, so congratulations to you as well, and enjoy your evening.
Okay, that brings us to the approval of minutes. Do I have, is there any modifications to the February 11th, 2025 regular School Board Meeting Minutes as presented? Hearing nine, I call for a motion to approve the regular February 11th, 2025 School Board Meeting Minutes. Moved by Mr. Callen, seconded by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote.
Ms. Felton, how do you vote for the minutes from February 11th? Thank you. Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes, so the motion did pass for the approval of the minutes from February 11th.
Thank you. At this time, the School Board will hear public comments related to the proposed school operating budget fiscal year 2526 and capital improvement program for the fiscal year 2526 through 3031 budget, followed by public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the School Board and the School Division from those who signed up with the School Board Clerk prior to noon today. The purpose for the public comment section of the School Board Agenda is for the School Board to offer an orderly forum to receive public comments during the School Board Meeting. Persons not called to the podium to address the School Board are requested to be respectful of speakers so that the School Board and persons observing the meeting are able to hear and observe each speaker's comments. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chambers to be civil in discussion and decorum. Whatever views you wish to express, the School Board wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and perspectives are heard. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. The School Board also invites the public to submit comments through email, which can be found on our website. Madam Clerk, please introduce the first speaker.
Thank you. Speaking on the public hearing on the budget, we have Heather Sype, Natalie Bray, and then Andrea Eisenberger.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the School Board, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Heather Sype, and I am President of the Virginia Beach Education Association. First, I want to take a moment to ensure everyone listening is aware of the recent historic investment the Virginia Legislature has made in education. I am proud to say that I have been one of a multitude of Virginia Education Association member educators who have worked alongside the tireless VEA staff lobbying and advocating for sustainable change and increased funding at the state level for public education. We have a couple of huge wins to celebrate that will benefit public schools across Virginia, and I am prepared to share what it specifically means for our staff and students here in Virginia Beach. We have won full elimination of the support cap. For VBCPS, this means an additional $10.9 million in funding for our essential education support professionals like bus drivers, custodians, instructional assistants, and more. VBCPS will also receive $2.7 million in flexible add-on funding for special education and an additional almost $2.7 million to support English language learners. There's a one-time $1,000 bonus for instructional and support staff, which will bring VBCPS $6.6 million on top of the governor's 3% raise that was already in the state budget. The school privatization agenda was rejected, ensuring public dollars stay with public schools. In this, an additional $12 million in statewide funding will be prioritized for math support. Excluding one-time funds for the bonus, that leaves an additional $16.3 million in state funding that is on its way to VBCPS. You're welcome. This is the result of the hard work of those of us with VEA who have never given up and will continue to fight for the changes still needed. In an ideal world, when Siegel presented the recommendation for the instructional scale to receive a 5% base increase plus the step and to fix the compression of the unified scale so every step is 1.5%, you would have been able to give it without hesitation. We don't live in an ideal world, but with VEA's recent wins in the state legislature that will bring an additional $16.3 million in state funding to VBCPS, it is indeed a realistic ask for you to find a way to give the instructional scale the 4% base increase with the step, which was option B, and to give the unified scale the option A recommendation. $16.3 million plus $6.6 million in one-time funds for a $1,000 bonus for all instructional and support staff. That's $22.9 million additional dollars for VBCPS. This is what we at VBEA and VEA work and fight for: public education funding and support. You're welcome. Now use it wisely.
Our next speaker is Natalie Bray and then Andrea Eisenberger.
Good evening, School Board members and Dr. Robertson. My name is Natalie Bray, and my children have gone to Kingston Elementary School, Old donation school, and next year, my oldest will attend Ocean Lakes High School for the Math and Science Academy. My husband and I both attended VBCPS, we grew up in Virginia Beach, and our family benefits greatly from the remarkable teachers, schools, and programs offered in Virginia Beach. There's so much for us to be proud of. I came here to talk tonight about an issue that seems very central and of utmost importance: supporting our Virginia Beach educators. I'm a dedicated PTA mom. I don't have the facts and figures that Heather just gave you, but I am in the school community on a regular basis, and I have been for the past eight years. I've seen firsthand the dedication, patience, persistence, and incredible knowledge and compassion for the teachers in our school system. As you know, Virginia Beach public school teachers are consistently paid less than the surrounding areas such as Chesapeake, Norfolk, and Portsmouth. We are paying teachers at the lowest rate out of all of Hampton Roads. This is unacceptable to me as a parent who values excellent educators, not only for my kids, but our community, communities' kids, and society as a whole. We're losing great teachers because they are going to other school systems or choosing other careers. I ask you to change this. I realize that education budgets are always tight, and it's likely that it's tougher than ever. Thank you to those who are on School Board, who are looking at accurate data and thinking about how to best protect our school system as a whole, but without excellent teachers, we don't have anything to stand on. My kids' schools and many others in Virginia Beach are consistently recognized for excellence. It's the teachers. The teachers are the most important part of our school system. Please work hard and use discernment to honor their request for proper pay, 5%, and probably a better calendar. Mr. David Culpepper, ever absent, but I will still address you. You're my representative. You drive by my kids' school every day, and watching you to see if you make good choices for the teachers who educate our children. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrea Eisenberger.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, School Board members, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Andrea Eisenberger, and I am the Art Specialist at Three Oaks Elementary School. I am speaking tonight about my concerns regarding the proposed school operating budget and the lack of adequate compensation it includes. In addition to being in my eighth year of employment with VBCPS and 14th year as an educator overall, I am the 2025 Teacher of the Year for my school, a National Board Certified Teacher, and a recipient of both the VEA and NEA Foundation Award for Teaching Excellence. Additionally, I am the SEA Advisor and serve on the PBIS Committee for my school. I say all this not to toot my own horn, but to share that I am an example of the caliber of teacher that VBCPS employs. I know I am not an anomaly, as every person I have ever had the pleasure of working with in the district puts in countless hours of working above and beyond their job description, regardless of their position. As the Vice President of the VBEA, I have also been privy to story after story of instructional and classified staff who love what they do but struggle to make ends meet. Many work two or more jobs or live outside of Virginia Beach where housing is more affordable. As a married woman in a two-income household, I could sympathize with these stories, but they were not my lived experience until this past fall. On October 5th, my family suffered an unthinkable tragedy when my husband passed away unexpectedly. The harsh reality of his death is that as an engineer with a bachelor's degree, he made more than twice what I make even with my hard-earned stipends, including my master's degree and National Board certification. I have had to return to graduate school to pursue my educational specialist degree in hopes of advancing to a higher-paying position, even though I truly enjoyed being in the classroom, and that's where I'd like to stay. I share my personal story, not to tug at your heartstrings, but to appeal to your humanity. A vast majority of your staff is hurting financially. Raises have not kept up with inflation, and a 3.5% raise will barely cover the rise in our cost of living. Seeing all of the information that Siegel and VBEA compiled about other districts has been extremely eye-opening. Every year during the SEON, our district's accolades are proudly shared, as they should be, but those accolades are earned through the blood, sweat, and tears of the staff who are in the buildings directly interacting with students every day, and we have earned far more than 3.5%. You owe it to your staff, all staff, to find a way to align our pay with the level of work and dedication we provide, especially if you want to continue to attract and retain the best of the best. Thanks to the lobbying and legislative efforts of the Virginia Education Association, our district will receive nearly $23 million in additional funds. This exciting news for our district and a great accomplishment for, this is exciting news for our district and a great accomplishment for our union. While some of these funds are earmarked for specific programs, there are funds included that could be used to increase staff pay. It is my hope, along with the recommendation of the VBEA, that you will consider using these additional funds.
And that is time.
To honor Siegel's suggestions.
Madam Chair, our public here for online has canceled, so we're going to move on to our public comments. Our first speaker will be Alan Wakefield, then Clark Murphy, then Melissa Luxon.
Good evening, everyone. This was a lovely day, wasn't it? I was gonna say, I love it when a plan comes together, but some of y'all might not be know that, remember that. So, tonight, I will invite you to experience one of the greatest stories ever told about something so small but so important. This little thing makes up all of the matter in the whole universe. It cannot be seen by the naked eye. It is mostly made of space, and its weight is very small. Think about all of the people you see speeding to get to work, not because they love their work, but because they are late for work. Did you have any thoughts about this small thing today? I can answer for you right now, no. How did I know this? Because you probably had more important thoughts to think about today. How much gas was in your car? The coffee that you had today? Some of these little things rolled up beside me in a previous story. The little things went to school and also to McDonald's, forming covalent and ionic bonds, and then. And then me, you know, the bond I formed over forty years ago, my wife's still putting up with me. That's amazing. My DeLorean is charged, ready to go back to about four hundred B.C. When the little thing was imagined by a Greek philosopher named Democritus. He was thought to be crazy because of his explanations of atoms. The things, we could break things down into smaller and smaller and smaller things. They thought he was a little wacko side. The pyramids had been here for almost two thousand years. A couple thousand years passed before we scientifically proved that these little things or atoms existed. A couple thousand years ago passed where we, I said that already. We finally achieved the splitting of atoms, I mean, the little things and releasing huge amounts of energy by nuclear fusion. In the twentieth century. Trillions of these small things are on this cup. And if we fill trillions of cups with ocean water, which I can't bring this map boat all the way right now. But I have the world's, all the world's oceans on here, all the water too, right here, okay? There would still be enough water in the oceans to fill a quint-trillion cups. If I fill just this one cup, okay? And I had all the ocean's water in cups like this, I would still have a quint-trillion. I mean, that's even more than, you know. Well, somebody makes in the federal government. Large or small numbers are difficult to grasp. The human brain uses our senses to differentiate between objects in our world. Senses have time dealing with small things like atoms. Oh, I mean little things. I finished with a quiz about the little things. Oh, I mean atoms. What would be the answer to the quiz? Adams, thank you very much. I knew all of you knew it. I just didn't want all of you to say it at one time. Then we'd have had a whole big discussion. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker will be Clark Murphy and then Melissa Luxon.
Good evening, Chair Roberts, Vice Chair Weems, Superintendent, Dr. Robinson, and members of the school board. My name is Clark Murphy and I'm a former teacher in the division and now an ESL instructor at Tidewater Community College. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you again tonight. As I've stated before, many families, particularly those from immigrant backgrounds, as well as teachers and staff. Have concerns about how our school division would respond to an immigration and custom enforcement or ICE visit. Families and staff deserve clarity on existing policies. And assurances that student well-being and legal protection remain a priority. Some may feel now's just not the time. But leadership means being proactive, not reactive. Now is the time. Previously, I urged the board to send a letter explaining school policies. Since that hasn't happened, I'm offering three other alternative ways to communicate this information. One, add information to the division website, like an FAQ format. Clarify the student records are protected under FERPA. Reference filer and dough which guarantees education for all children regardless of immigration status. And three, summarize the school board regulation five dash sixty-four dot one. On handling law enforcement interactions. My second, uh, my second idea is to host a community information session. Provide guidance for parents and educators on how schools respond to law enforcement requests. Ensure staff understands student privacy laws. Share available resources for concerned families. And then lastly, issue a general statement on student safety. Without directly mentioning ICE, reaffirm the division's commitment to student privacy and safety. Emphasize that all students, regardless of background, have the right to an education without fear. This could be framed as part of a broader effort to support all families rather than a response to immigration enforcement concerns. I urge the school board and superintendent to consider these options to ensure transparency and support all families. I've also compiled a list of twenty Virginia school divisions, cities, and organizations. That have immigration resources on their website. You'll get that after the meeting. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next speaker is Melissa Luxon.
Hi. Two weeks ago, we had a speaker who seemed deeply troubled by the message of the Super Bowl halftime show. She felt compelled to lecture this school board on a black scholar whose groundbreaking work in anti-racism has certain people clutching their pearls. Imagine the caucacity, standing here preaching about critical thinking when every single one of her talking points was lifted straight from a Chris Rufo op-ed. Written five days earlier. As Black History Month comes to a close, let's be clear. We will not allow the descendants of unsalted butter to whitewash or deflect from the truth. From sixteen nineteen to eighteen sixty-five, this country ripped children from their families and sold them like commodities. Black women and girls were raped, sexually exploited, and forced to breed. And their bodies used to make more property for their enslavers. Even their very hair was stolen and stuffed into furniture cushions so that the wealthy white folks could rest their behinds in luxury. And even after slavery was abolished, white supremacy simply adapted. The Reconstruction Era unleashed black codes, convict leasing, and waves of racial terrorism. White mobs didn't just lynch black people, they did so with crowds cheering, children watching, and cameras documenting the spectacle. There are photos, horrific, undeniable, of grinning faces gathered around a pregnant black woman whom they lynched, set on fire, and mutilated. Ripping the fetus from her body before murdering it too. Then came the red summer of nineteen nineteen when white mobs burned black communities from Chicago to Washington, D.C. The nineteen twenty-one Tulsa Race Massacre when Greenwood was bombed and burned to the ground. Literacy tests, poll taxes, and sheer terror kept people from voting for nearly a century. Medical racism, housing discrimination, redlining, these aren't distant atrocities. They're part of the system we still live in today. The battle between white rage and black excellence is not history, it's happening right now. But history also shows us that black resilience is unmatched. Ida B. Wells, Madame CJ Walker, Fannie Lou Hamer, Maya Angelou, James Baldwin. Dr. Charles Drew, who revolutionized blood banking and plasma storage. Catherine Johnson, Dorothy Vaughn, and Mary Jackson, whose mathematical brilliance launched the U.S. into space. For four hundred years, despite slavery, segregation, and systemic racism, black people have thrived, innovated, led, and reshaped history. The legacy of black excellence is undeniable and it continues to inspire future generations to break barriers and build a more just world. But let's be clear, racism didn't end with slavery. It evolved. It embedded itself into laws, policies, and institutions that still harm black communities today. And saying, but I didn't own slaves, it's a coward's excuse. No one alive today enslaved human beings, but plenty still benefit from the power, wealth, and privileges built on black oppression. As white people, it's not enough to simply not be racist. We must be and teach in schools. Our children to actively be anti-racist. I also support the five percent teachers age. Thanks.
And that is time. Madam Chair, our online speaker is not there, so that concludes our speakers for this evening.
That brings us to the information portion of our agenda. We will start with interim financial statements, January twenty twenty-five, and we welcome Mr. Daniel Hopkins, Director of Business Services.
Good evening, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, School Board Members, School Board Members, Dr. Robertson. As of January thirty-first, the overall revenue trend remains acceptable at this time in the fiscal year. If we recall last month, the governor's proposed budget is a net increase of one point seven million from our current budget. The House and Senate have made their proposals and the only significant change would be a bonus to SOQ positions. As you heard from Crystal Pate's presentation earlier. We will update you with any of the General Assembly's final decisions. Federal revenues are showing an acceptable trend at this point in the fiscal year. We have received federal impact aid payments of approximately nine point eight million dollars. Other sources of revenue through the month are acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. They are down about two hundred thousand dollars from last year mainly due to the stop-arm enforcement, which is down about four hundred eighty-five thousand. And we've received four hundred thousand dollars in rebates for the purchase of propane buses. The next graph shows that sales tax receipts are an acceptable level. Year-to-date through January, we are approximately seven hundred thousand dollars higher than the same time last year. And the last graph shows that the expenditures and recoveries trend continues to remain acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. At this point, I'll take any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Great, seeing none, thank you so much. I appreciate your time and look forward to future updates. And that brings us now to B, Achievable Dream Attendance Zone Expansion. I welcome Dr. Brower, Senior Executive Director of High Schools, and Richard White, Chief People Officer at Achievable Dream.
Thank you, Dr. Ms. Brown. Just a little bit of a change. I'm going to introduce it. Mr. Wright couldn't be here, so I'll share who's here from.
Okay, thank you very much.
Achievable Dreams, so I apologize for that difference on the agenda. Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the school board, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Matt Delaney and I'm the Chief Schools Officer. I just want to set the table for what you're going to see in the presentation this evening. We're going to submit a. Recommendation to expand the transportation zone for an Achievable Dream Academy. As this is currently an informational item on the agenda, the topical return for action at the March eleventh school board meeting. The presentation's going to be twofold. It's going to start with Ms. Mesa and as the Chief Strategy Officer for Achievable Dream Academy. And I'm sorry, for Achievable Dream and Dr. Walter Brower, Senior Executive Director of High Schools. Ms. Anderson will give a historical overview of Achievable Dream, knowing that many of you are new to the board and need that context. She's going to review the mission and vision, as well as some other really key components of what an Achievable Dream provides students and families in our school division. She will be followed by Dr. Walter Brower, who's been, he's really been instrumental in the expansion of Achievable Dream to the high school level. He's going to share the efforts to increase enrollment as well, as well as the rationale for the recommendation. And then they'll both be available to answer questions at the conclusion of the presentation. I'd also like to acknowledge that Mr. Matt Fitzky, Principal of Sea-Tac Elementary School is here. As well as Dr. Dawn Kramer, who's the principal at Lynn Haven Achievable Dream Academy, and Joy Boone, who is the coordinator. Of our secondary Achievable Dream Academy. So at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Ms. Anderson, who's the Chief Strategy Officer for Achievable Dream. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to share a little bit about our program, Achievable Dream. An Achievable Dream is a nonprofit organization with a unique structure and goal. To cooperate schools in partnership with our local school division. In primarily underserved communities, providing additional resources to level the playing field for all students. An Achievable Dream began in partnership with. An Achievable Dream began in partnership with the Newport News Public School in nineteen ninety-two with our first graduating class in two thousand and one. In two thousand and fourteen, we expanded to Virginia Beach with a K-two program at Sea-Tac Elementary School. Since then, we have expanded a grade level each year and are excited to have a full K-twelve program as of this school year. We will have our first graduating class of Dreamers in Virginia Beach this spring, and we are so excited to see them walk across the stage on June eleventh. A new building for grades nine through twelve opened in August of twenty twenty-three at Lynn Haven Middle and High School. Which houses our K, our, sorry, excuse me, our K through fifth grade program is housed at Sea-Tac Elementary. And our sixth through twelfth grade program is housed at Achievable Dream Middle and High School at Lynn Haven. A few additional facts about an Achievable Dream. Our mission is to develop independent, productive citizens through a social, academic, and mindset education. Our vision is to bring equity to education by providing opportunities for success in school and in life. We integrate an array of research-based strategies in a comprehensive program. That yield significant results in both academic achievement, positive behavior, as well as the development of critical life skills. We have a hundred percent on-time graduation rate from our first graduating class of Newport News in two thousand and one. All of our schools are fully accredited and ninety-nine percent of our over one thousand alumni. Are either currently attending or have graduated from college, a trade school, or are currently serving in the military or in the workforce. An Achievable Dream has strong community partnerships. From, and support from individuals, foundations, as well as corporate sponsors, a few of which you see on the screen. Our Achievable Dream program here in Virginia Beach has over a hundred donors and partners, including Town Bank, Checkered Flag, Ferguson. The Hampton Roads Community Foundation, Centerra, the United Way of South Hampton Roads, Virginia Natural Gas, Naval Air Station Oceana. The Virginia Beach Police Department, Norfolk Tug, MSP, and the Landmark Foundation, to name a few. I'll save you from the full list of a hundred. Their support covers a variety of program components to include our social, academic, and mindset education framework. Which is a comprehensive approach to strong academics, as well as supporting students' social and emotional well-being. And their character development. We have a strong emphasis on building relationships, developing soft skills, as well as trauma-informed care. Students participate in social rotation classes, including etiquette, speaking green, conflict resolution ethics. And mindfulness and reflection. Our middle and high school students participate in What It Takes, a workforce development program. That brings in our corporate partners to teach soft skills that our students need to be successful in today's workforce. This year's partners have included VBPD, Kalea Law, Centerra, Access College Foundation, and Capital Group so far this school year. We have an extended day as well as an extended year. With Saturday School and Summer Intercession, which provide additional academic and enrichment time, enhance learning opportunities. As well as additional experiences beyond the traditional school day. The Achievable Dream program is up to eight and a half hours a day with an additional twenty days in the summer. And approximately twenty-four days of Saturday School sessions throughout the year. The added expense of the extended program is paid by an Achievable Dream, including stipends for the faculty and staff who work those extended hours. In addition, an Achievable Dream makes an annual contribution to VBCPS to use for the use of those facilities. An Achievable Dream provides additional exposure experiences, including increased field trips. On-site engagement opportunities, career prep, and college tours. We provide considerable post-secondary support, including scholarships, assistance with the application and financial aid. Guidance through acceptance and move-in process, as well as support and workshops for parents and guardians throughout that process. We strive to ensure that finances are never the reason that our graduates are not able to attend college, trade school, or whatever that next. Step might be after graduation from Virginia Beach Public Schools. An Achievable Dream students receive a scholarship provided by an organization or individual. Who serves as that year's class sponsor, and we are extremely grateful to the Copeland and Clubenoff families who are serving as our inaugural Virginia Beach Achievable Dream class sponsor. Our college partnerships include Clemson University, Christopher Newport University, Old Dominion University, Norfolk State, UVA. Peninsula Community College, and Virginia Tech. Thank you so much for your time. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Brower for some additional updates from VBCPS.
Good evening, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the board, Dr. Robertson. In our memorandum of understanding with an Achievable Dream, the elementary, middle, and high schools should have a minimum of seventy-five students per grade level. From a kindergarten through twelfth grade perspective, seventy-five students per grade level would equal nine hundred and seventy-five total students. Currently, there are six hundred and seventy-one students enrolled in the Achievable Dream academies, which puts enrollment at sixty-nine percent. To meet the seventy-five percent threshold, we would need to have seven hundred and thirty-one students. Which would require the addition of sixty total students across grades K through twelve. Please know that our desire is to move well beyond. Well beyond the seventy- well beyond the 75% threshold, and we have already made efforts to increase enrollment, which I will share on the following slide. Throughout an Achievable Dreams partnership with Virginia Beach City Public Schools, the number-one issue impacting enrollment has been the transportation zones. Since 2016 to 2017, we have modified the transportation zones to better align with the needs of our student population, but we understand that families may not always have control over their circumstances. We recognize how important it is to meet our families where they are, ensuring students have access to the education and support they need. We believe the addition, or the additional expansion, will greatly increase enrollment and student retention. An Achievable Dream and VB-CPS have always had a strong partnership, and the collaboration between our two organizations has only grown in recent years. This collaboration extends beyond the leadership of the program and the division to include an Achievable Dreams Board of Director's support of VP-CPS's executive leadership. In an effort to increase enrollment, we reallocated a position for an academy coordinator, whose major focus is to increase enrollments and promote the program. Ms. Joy Boone, Academy Coordinator, worked with Achievable Dream Corporate Office to develop a one-pager to provide a snapshot of what an Achievable Dream is and what the program provides. A team of student ambassadors was established to participate in recruitment events. Families were invited to open house events to see the new building and be further informed about the program. With the support of Communications and Achievable Green Corporate Office, the website has been updated and accessible and accessibility, excuse me, has been improved. The application has been modified. It is more user-friendly and truly identifies the characteristics of a Dreamer. Tours and site-based information nights were held on December 5th and January 14th. Staff and student advisors, excuse me, ambassadors from Achievable Dream visited several elementary and middle schools for the purpose of information and recruitment. Last school year, first-time ninth graders were given the opportunity to apply and enter the program. As of today, we have 59 elementary, 124 middle school, and 21 new rising ninth-grade student applications for the '25-'26 school year. Although we are excited about the increase in application numbers, there is a concern that many of these students may not be able to attend due to transportation. So our recommendation is to increase enrollment by expanding the transportation zones, specifically focusing on Green Run Elementary, Holland Elementary, Parkway Elementary, Rosemont Elementary, Bayside Middle School, and Loxbury Middle School. And please know that families outside of these zones can still apply and attend if they provide transportation. The current total transportation cost for an Achievable Dreams grades kindergarten through 12th grade is approximately $620,000 annually. The expansion would increase this cost to approximately $750,000. Prior to the '24-'25 school year, projected transportation costs for the high school program alone was more than $300,000. But we moved to a zero-bill schedule in the high school, and we reduced that cost by $150,000. Based on the current MOU, an Achievable Dream corporate offsets transportation costs by providing $100 per student. If we meet the minimum of 975 students, the Achievable Dream contribution would be $97,500. If we maximize the enrollment with 1,170 total students in grades K through 12, the Achievable Dream contribution would be $117,000. Again, an Achievable Dream is a nonprofit organization with a unique structure and goal to cooperate schools in primarily underserved communities, providing additional resources to level the playing field for students. Research supports that students and programs like an Achievable Dream showed improved academic performance, self-esteem, long-term success, which benefits the broader community. The Virginia Beach City Public Schools Officer of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability is currently evaluating the K-12 and Achievable Dream program. Data on operational aspects of the program and student outcomes will be analyzed, including students' educational paths once they graduate from VB-CPS. That report will be shared with the school board next school year. This concludes the presentation. I am available for questions.
Okay, I see a few folks here have put their name in. Dr. Green.
Thank you, Dr. Brower. And the staff from Achievable Dream, someone may want to join you at the podium, because one of my first questions is regarding one of their slides. Just to give you full disclosure, I worked for the school division for 17 years, so I remember when we started Achievable Dream in 2014. And I set as the backdrop that transportation has always been an issue. And Dr. Robertson, you can correct me if I'm wrong. When we started it at C-Tech, we expanded the zone just as what is being proposed this evening to capture more students. And here we are again, a few years later, back again. So if you could go to Science 3, because I think it's important that we know we're not comparing apples to apples. Slide 3. Yeah, that one. Okay. So the model that you started your wonderful program on in Newport News is based on a school, standalone school. Is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And so my point is that in Virginia Beach, we are a school within a school. So some of the operational pieces definitely will be significantly different from what is espoused on that slide, primarily because, one, we have not had a graduation class yet. And so my first question is, how many students are graduating this year? How many are doing all the things that are in your bullet up there about going to college or proprietary school, et cetera?
Absolutely. And to, you are completely right. Our program in Newport News is a full-school model. Here in Virginia Beach, it is a full-school model at C-Tech. In Lynn Haven, we do share space in the middle school. And the new high school building fully houses our Achievable Dream high school students specifically. We have 28 students graduating in our first graduating class this year. They are all on track to graduate, and so we expect us to continue that 100% on-time graduation rate. They are doing wonderful and have had wonderful test results so far this year. 82% of them are on track to graduate with an advanced studies diploma. We have already received 55 college acceptances. Obviously, we are quite early in that process, as they will continue to receive those throughout the spring, up until May 1st. And they applied to over 128 colleges. So they are definitely on track to follow their peers in Newport News as far as the statistics you see on the screen up there. Anything else that you want to add regarding the program?
I know with some of your other programs outside of Virginia Beach, students do have scholarship opportunities. I know through the SS Foundation, some of them get other merit-based scholarships. And I said merit-based, not based on financial need. How do, how do those statistics look right now for your upcoming class with getting full merit-based scholarships to some of our colleges and universities?
So far, from what we have received back, it's looking very good. Of course, a lot of that financial information comes after they've received their acceptances, but they are working very closely, the entire senior class, with Access College Foundation, which is one of our partners, to make sure that they are applying to those outside scholarships and getting all of those materials in on time. We have a dedicated graduation success director, who is housed at the middle and high school. And really, in addition to the amazing Virginia Beach Public School staff, works one-on-one with all of our students to make sure that they're hitting those marks. And from what we have received back so far with scholarships, they are very much in line. I believe they've already received over half a million dollars in scholarship money awarded.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Melnick?
So I'm pleased to hear that Achievable Dreams is willing to supplement transportation costs. Can you give me the statistics again, Dr. Brower, for applicants right now?
Yes.
We, we need to increase. We're at 69%. We need to hit the 75% threshold, so
Yes.
How many applications do we have right now?
We have 59 elementary, 124 middle school, and 21 applications for rising ninth graders.
Okay.
And we would need to accept a minimum of 60 students to hit that 75%, and that's across K through 12.
So so can you explain how the transportation will work again? So is there a, I'm sorry, if you already said this, I'm sorry that I missed it. I listened to everything, but is there a central drop-off location?
So, and let me say this, transportation gives us an estimate of cost to go to those additional neighborhoods.
Okay.
The equivalent that was given to me is one bus driver and one bus.
Okay.
Ms. Melnick, if I can add, we looked at trying to cluster areas to reduce transportation costs, and that's why you heard Parkway, Holland, Green Run Elementary School, and one other elementary. They're all clustered together, so I mean, literally, it's, they're within two or three miles of each other. And then a focus on Bayside Middle School and Loxbury Middle School. Again, to cluster those schools in proximity to Lynn Haven for the middle school kids.
Well, I certainly am encouraged by the number of applicants, especially at the middle school level. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rogers?
Good evening. Thank you so much for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. I had asked for, we have this number of 69%. Do you have the breakout of the C-Tech enrollment versus the middle, high school, so the elementary and secondary?
Yeah, so as of today, there are 380 students at the C-Tech building. There are 126 students in the grades six through eight at Lynn Haven Middle, and 119 students in the high school building.
Okay. And so does the C-Tech site give you, if you were to just look at that, does that give you the 75% that you need?
It's 60 total students. So if it was 60 in elementary school, we would hit 75. If it were 60 in middle school, we would hit 75. We don't have 60 applications, so I can't say 60 for high school, but across grades K through 12, we would need 60 total students to hit 75. But of course, we don't want to just have 75% of the capacity. We want, we really like at some point in time to fill the program.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Rogers, I think your question was, are we meeting the 75% threshold at C-Tech?
Yes.
And the answer is, we are, because 75 students for each grade level would be 450, Mr. Fiski, is that right? And so we're at 84%, so yes.
That's what I was looking for. So if it was, if we were having, C-Tech's been around a lot longer. So that was why I'm asking, as far as, you know, success of the program, the one that's been around longer, is that having more success is what I guess I was getting at by asking those numbers. Also, how are you guys recruiting for middle and high school right now? Because obviously, that's where our numbers are lower, and it's a newer program.
Yeah, as I shared before, we've been out with student ambassadors to elementary and middle schools to recruit. We've been at, we were at Academy Night. We've had information sessions in the building, so families can come and tour the new building. So, I mean, an Achievable Dream is part of the academy process. So just like families explore for Governor STEM or math and science, Achievable Dream is right there.
Okay. And then, oh, shoot, I had a question, and now I just forgot it as you were talking.
I'll give you a second to think about it, because I'll help answer that other part of your question.
Go ahead.
So this year, with a graduating class, for the first time, parents will have tangible evidence of the value of going through the Achievable Dream. It's likely we'll have 28 graduates go through, many of whom will have four years of college paid for.
So is college paid for via Achievable Dream, or the scholarships, or a mix of both?
A mix of both.
Okay. But it is, are all the students guaranteed their college paid for?
So as, yes.
Sorry.
No, no worries. So we provide a base scholarship for all of our students through our class sponsors, and then we work very closely with them to ensure that their FASPOS are completed on time, that they're working through financial aid with each of those universities. And then they're applying for many outside scholarships, so we can reduce that burden. We cannot guarantee 100% college being paid for. However, we work very closely with the students to ensure that that is not a barrier to taking that step. In addition, those colleges that I mentioned at the end of my slide, those college partnerships, with those schools, we do have an agreement that they will help meet us in the middle to meet that gap. So at those schools, those students are able to graduate with that full ride. And I was also going to add to what Dr. Robertson and Dr. Brower said as well. At C-Tech, we have seen a huge growth in the awareness within the community of the Achievable Dream program and the strong interest there. I believe we're starting to see that at the middle and high school, but we certainly saw the same pattern in Newport News as well, that as the program became more established and the community was more familiar with it, and they knew what the option and opportunities were, the program grew with it. And so we've seen that natural progression here, and being able to access those additional transportation zones will be a huge impact in that.
Ms. Rogers, if I can add to your question as well around recruitment, because I don't want this to slip by in Dr. Brower's script. The reallocation of a position to the coordinator of Joy Boone, who was previously an assistant principal, is probably our biggest recruiting move we've done on the secondary level. Her total commitment to that role is seeing, I think, where you're seeing those numbers that have elevated particularly on the middle school, and even with 21 ninth graders to join in. Because the other thing, I think the board is, and Dr. Green hit on this a little bit, the high school's a little more challenging with all the options our kids have. So we have to be very strategic in creating opportunities for at-risk students that maybe don't always see college as a future, the work that Achievable Dreams has done to market that. But I don't want to dismiss or not give the significance of having a coordinator of secondary to completely drive that program. We're seeing very strong initial results on that, and I just wanted to highlight that part.
I remember my last question. Do you have any data on the number of applications that you're receiving that perhaps parents are saying, my child got in, but we can't, we don't have the ability to get them there, so then we have to pull our application back?
Not so much application, but if you, if you'd like, I can share. Last school year at C-Tech, there were 52 withdrawals. Six of those were due to transportation. 33 moved out of Virginia Beach. And then we had 13 that were in-zone that chose to go a different route. For the secondary students, there were 28. 10 moved out of Virginia Beach. 12 could not continue because of transportation. And we had six who just chose to go to their home school. Sometimes, they decide to go to the home school because of athletics.
Right, and it's not always a good fit for everybody, which I understand. I just wanted to know the numbers of the students who were having transportation issues, so thank you for that.
Vice Chair Williams?
Thank you. So, so basically, we have about 30 students in the ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade each. We have 28 people graduating, you said. So that's about 30. And we probably have about 30 11th graders, and about 30 10th graders, and about 30 9th graders.
Yes, it's not exactly that, but close.
Yeah, because we have 119. Okay. And then in the middle school, we have about 40, average, on each grade level.
Okay.
Okay. So I know that we expanded the zone. I think it So I know that we expanded the zone, I think it was in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, some, I I believe somewhere around that. What were the results of that first time that we expanded? Did we see huge positive results? Do you know?
I was not here during that time. So I'd hate to give you an answer that is incorrect. But uh from what I've seen since I have been in Virginia Beach is that we are getting the kids from C-TAC to the middle school program, and then we have to find a way to keep them there. Now, I'll say this, part of it was because some of those kids go into high school, enter high school, or go into the portables. But now we have this big, beautiful building. We we have opportunities that some didn't realize they had before they actually got to the nice new building. So I believe that we will be able to keep the numbers once we get them there. We just got to get them there. We've got to get them to the school.
Okay, and refresh my memory about sports. If they're an athlete, do they go back to their home school and high school and? Or do they, I've forgotten?
No, ma'am, those students who are athletes participate at First Colonial.
Okay, I see, okay.
Been able to work with the schedule in in the past couple of years, and a huge thank you to both um Dr. Kramer and and Joy for making it so that it was more plausible for students who maybe were having conflicts with sports to work with the schedule and still be able to participate in those. And so that has made a big difference, I believe, in retaining students that may have otherwise left because of sports. I also was not here when that first expansion happened. But um I did want to note that um pre-pandemic, we were up to over four hundred and forty kids in C-TAC. We, like many schools, we saw a huge reduction of that over the pandemic. We had over forty students who just moved out of the Virginia Beach and the Hampton Roads area. So there was a large reduction there, but we did see an increase after those additional school zone uh transportation expansions that first time.
And I know in the MOU, it says, the parties will work cooperatively to recruit students. And it sounds like we've done qu- quite a lot. Is is that also what? The Achievable Dream, not just VPCPS, but how are we work, how, what are y'all doing?
Yes.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but tell me what you're doing.
No, absolutely. We've worked very closely with uh Ms. Boone and her team over there to make sure that we are talking about the program. We are showcasing all of those different opportunities and elements, especially going into that middle and high school realm. But we've very, worked very closely with her, and having um that expanded team over there has truly been a game changer. I cannot reiterate that enough, having that dedicated position, as well as officially designating an Achievable Dream as an academy. So that way, we are part of that conversation when parents are looking at all of the academy options at high s- at the high school level.
I'm still not sure about the scholarship for college. I I don't understand, because it sounds like you strive to make sure that nobody has any college debt, but then when you're talking about FAFSA and all that, that is college debt, a lot of it is. So I'm I'm just kind of uncertain about that, but.
So Vice Chair Williams, if you don't mind, I'd like to give you an example. Uh, I met a young man last November. Um, he was a graduate of the Newport News campus. Corporate sponsorship filled in the gap where financial aid and scholarships did not cover. They not only supported him through his undergraduate degree, his master's degree, but he got to a point in a doctoral program at uh George Mason University, where he did not or could not afford his rent, and his corporate sponsor paid it. He is now a professor at George Washington University. I have seen some amazing things um that have transpired because of the corporate partnerships. And and we we may say it loosely, fill in the gaps, but for some, the gap is what keeps them from going to college. So um I I've, I can personally say that I'm vested in an Achievable Dream. And I know you all don't know, but my wife is the former principal at the Newport News Middle High School campus. So even before I came to Virginia Beach, I was, I knew what an Achievable Dream was and what it could do. And I was just um elated when, where's Mr. Laney, when Mr. Laney said, uh, that's yours. So um just my.
Thank, yes, thank you. I'm going to yield to my colleagues that do have a couple more questions, but I'll wait till my turn comes back around.
And and Dr. Green, if you don't mind, um I'm going to come back to you once everyone else has had a chance to speak. Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, thank you so much for sharing this, and um exciting to read about Achievable Dream and its mission and its work and learn about it. I'm a little curious, like, what does the application and admissions process look like? What's the acceptance rate? What are kind of the characteristics that you're looking for when you're like, this person's a a good match for our program? And because my first thought is like, do we just need to, you know, when you think about scaling the growth, do we just need to open, widen the admission criteria? That's kind of one of the things I was thinking through. I'd I'd love some uh eyesight into that.
Sure, well, I can definitely speak to the application process and what that looks like. We use the same application process across all of our schools, both here in Virginia Beach and in Newport News. And we really look for students um that can benefit the most from those additional opportunities and experiences. And so we look at a variety of social risk factors um to establish that need and some of those maybe underlying challenges that they might be facing. And so that really is how we determine our, the the need there, and then those applications are scored. So there is not a threshold of having to meet a certain level of need, but really looking at the application pool and um identifying the students that could benefit the most from that extra support.
Do you know what you just, your acceptance rate is, just off the top of your head?
I would need to defer to principals of what our acceptance rate is right now. Um, I believe we have been accepting all students that, you know, really fit, fit those needs as the program has been growing. Um, and certainly, I think this year we'll have a little bit more of a competitive pool with the large number of applications we've received already. But we've really been accepting um all students that that we can fit into the program.
I think that'd be, at least I'd appreciate the information, I guess, before we move back, so if we get back.
Ms. Felton? Oh, Ms. Dwyer, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Matt took one of my questions. I wanted to know what the criteria for enrollment look like and what that process look like. Also, um what does the curriculum look like? Is it tailor-made for each student? Because I'm I'm sorry, I'm hearing all this for the first time.
Well, we'd love for you to come to a tour if you'd like, and you can really have a chance to see it firsthand. As a, all of our schools, of course, are first and foremost Virginia Beach public schools. And so our students are receiving the same curriculum that that they, every other student in Virginia Beach is receiving. With our extended day, we are able to add additional components of our Achievable Dream, same framework, that social academic and mindset education framework, which includes um those social rotation classes, that soft skill development, additional academic um remediation time. We have a large number of clubs and extracurriculars, so students are able to participate in those on campus, hopefully alleviating any transportation um challenges for parents, maybe with um after-school activities. And so the the core curriculum remains our Virginia Beach curriculum. And then Achievable Dream is really able to come on top of that and add that, add those additional social, emotional, soft skills and other opportunities um on top of that.
So it sounds like parents, uh, this is, this is added uh atten- attention. And um it's added benefits for the students that are enrolled. I'm just sitting here wondering, of all the perks that are in this program, if I was a parent of one of these students, I'd be driving my kid to the school or my student to the school myself, just to make sure they would get in.
And we do have a lot of parents who who do that as well. You know, at C-TAC, I believe we pull from nineteen different school zones. However, we have students enrolled from over thirty, so we do have parents who are driving their kids every day.
Yeah, I was going to say, okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Felton?
Thank you for coming and sharing. Uh, I think it's a little bit more um passionate for me about Achievable Dream. Twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, I was in the uh trenches introducing Achievable Dream to C-TAC. And that was a battle within itself. But where I stand today, I am greatly proud of the work that you've done and being a partnership as well. I just had to take a minute to um to say I appreciate Principal Dobby, who was at C-TAC, who was one of the uh champions of that as well. And Principal Brower, who also was there, who helped us mitigate through the um function of getting Achievable Dream online. It was fantastic. I would say to my colleagues and to the public, one of the most um egregious thing for the parents was Achievable Dream was transportation, getting the students there. And uh after we expanded that next year, we opened it to any parent that lived in the city of Virginia Beach. You know, your child can attend, but you had to provide the transportation. And for some parents, that was hard to do. That's why we lost some of our students, because they found that they couldn't keep up the um, the logistics of getting them to school and picking them up after school. So if you ever drive by C-TAC Elementary School, you can see the line wrapped around the building, picking up students from the Achievable Dream. I do appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I do, uh, I would say too, that one of the things that stuck out to me about Achievable Dream it was how they were advocating for their students to go to college. Not only go to college, but to track them and keep in touch with them as they were maneuvering through college. And I remember one of the students, I've been with you this long, one of the students missed his date to get to to college. And the Achievable Dream um administrator went to his house, knocked on his door, got him out of the bed and took him to college so he could be there on first admission. So you've gone far and beyond. I've attended most of your banquets that has supported this as well. Uh, it's open to the the school board that wanted to go, and we donated our funds to go to it as well. I also really like the support, student support that they have within the school, within the Achievable Dream for the students, making sure that they're getting what they need, what's accessible to them, and them staying on track. There are so many parents now that said, I wish that my child could go to Achievable Dream, but I cannot get them there because of transportation. That's today. I'm hearing that now. I am um a proud of it as well. I have a grandson who transitioned from C-TAC Elementary to Lynn Haven. He's there now. So many things that he's picked up from the Achievable Dream that has given him uh his first steps into uh getting further into his education. I see that we're going to have a first graduation class, and I I can't wait to see that. So how will they, will you have your own graduation, or would that be a part of our school system? How would that be put together?
So they, they're on the graduation schedule for the Convention Center, June eleventh, I think it's at ten AM?
Thank you. I just had to say thank you, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about this, the expansion and how we're going to get the students there. Parents was talking about it, they they were sort of kind of um disappointed because they couldn't go because of transportation and because they felt like they didn't have the parent access of knowing when and where they would have that opportunity again. So I hope that you will uh get that op- that information out to them and let them know that it's open again for the students and that some transportation will be um up uh uh capable for them as well. So I'm sitting back to wait to see how far we're going to go to this. Thank you.
We're just going to go in order, since everyone's had a chance to speak once. Um, Vice Chair Williams?
Yes, thank you. So o- originally, we went to Newport News, and I think I'm the only one on the board, yeah. Was that time that we went? Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Felton. I thought it was, okay. Okay, so and we toured, and we were so impressed. And of course, the beginning of Achievable Dream started with an out- after-school tennis program. And of cour- of course, the tennis coach in me was very intrigued at that. And I've often said, I've loved this program and wish that parts of it were in every elementary school. Because if you've been there and you've gotten to see exactly what these kids do, it's 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 pretty remarkable. And it needs to be, you know, copied, and and I think a lot of, you know, a lot of the aspects are copied in some of our schools. So like Ms. Dwyer, my husband and I have, we were just talking about this yesterday, and we were like, why aren't just, like, why don't we have a huge waiting list for this program? So that's just, i- it's it's kind of troublesome, and I'm, you know, I hear transportation, but I'm not sure if that's all of it. So my question is, do you think that we're going to be here, back here in three or four years, expanding the zone again? And when is it a point to say, okay, we're just going to treat this like an Achievable Dream Academy and open it up to the whole city with transportation? Because that that's where I'm thinking that it could go, because if we come back in three or four years, because we haven't met the numbers or one group, and then three or four years, and then we're like, okay, we're opening it now to the whole city. And of course, you're talking about a lot more money and a lot more transportation, but are we heading that way, and is that the way that we need to go?
To be perfectly honest, in terms of the high school, the building's not that big. So um. The building is not that big. So. We'll 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 work very hard to fill it, to reach capacity. Of course, sharing a space with Lynn Haven Middle, you only have so much room. But um if we fill the need, I'm sure we'd be back at the table. But um right now, we we'd like to hit um one thousand one hundred and seventy as as a, as a mark for the entire program, so that we can say that we've reached the capacity that was planned for originally.
Yeah, and Ms. Ms. Williams, I think that um we have to recognize the differences between uh the programs offered in Newport News City Public Schools and the programs offered in Virginia Beach. You may or may not know, academy programs in Newport News Public Schools, no, right. So our students have a plethora of options at every level. And um I honestly believe this expansion into these, this this little quadrant of elementary schools and these two middle schools will get us to a position where we can get to close to a hundred percent and run the program that we were running it. Some of the efficiencies that we created really is a result of Dr. Brower's ownership of the work. I want to say ownership, because he has eleven other high schools that he's working with. He's taken ownership over this. He's taken ownership over some things at Renaissance Academy. We're blessed for that. The work of Joy Boone, who's over there smiling right there, she was a phenomenal AP. It was a sacrifice to let her out of the AP role, to put her in the coordinator role. But we believe that it was necessary. So I think it's more likely that we'll be here in a few years celebrating the fact that we're near a hundred percent every year. And and less likely that we would need to create a standalone high school. Right now, I believe the model works. First Colonial is a willing partner with Achievable Dream, with the Zero Bell. Their, the kids are going back and forth, and I just think that it will continue to grow.
And to give a little bit of perspective from from thirty-three years ago at Newport News, our first graduating class on Newport News was seventeen students and quickly grew from there. But those first few classes um were smaller and now are consistently hitting fifty students. We actually have sixty-nine graduating this year in Newport News. So we expected to have a first, the first few classes would be smaller, and we've seen the numbers at C-TAC rise above that threshold and expect to see that continue to move up through that. But the transportation zones are critical. You know, our our parents, often we see um that they're moving, whether it's out of Virginia Beach or within Virginia Beach because of housing changes or childcare. And so a lot of those decisions are not necessarily up to them in that they have to make that decision to move their their child out of zone.
Dr. Green?
Thank you. Of the twenty-eight seniors that are graduating, and I heard you, Dr. Brower, when you said that next year we will get to see an evaluation report. How many of those students started at, and you may not have this data readily, how many of those students started at C-TAC? Of those twenty-eight?
All of them. All of them.
All of them, good, thank you.
Excuse me, all but one. Oh, excuse me, all but one. Twenty-seven.
Okay, but that's still good. That's good.
Ms. Melnick?
Okay, I should, I might sound a little negative, so I'm gonna start by saying I support this expansion. But, okay, so I'm an educator by trade, so I'm not in the business of failing students, right? Uh, we made a commitment to the Achievable Dreams Academy. We built a middle and high school. That's a huge commitment to this program. We cannot turn our backs on this now, right? But this is my point with charter schools and why they fail. Because it's money, and you need money to continue for a school to, to, to continue. A, a, a private entity needs money, and it's constant fundraising. It's a lot of work, and that's why these partnerships are so very important. Public, private partnerships, it's how these programs survive. It's how Green Run Collegiate is surviving because of VBCPS. But you can imagine for our teachers who work tirelessly, not only in the classroom, but advocating for, for increased salary, that every year at budget time, everybody's asking, right? And we always have to say to our people, we want to, but, we want to, but this is another this amount of money, and this is another this amount of money, and inflation, and, and, and all of the components that go into all of, yep, to this budget process, and how we continually, continuously put our teachers on the back burner. However, these are our teachers. Um, I like the program. Um, and I can see that we're not gonna be able to move forward until we can provide the transportation, which is why I started my last comment with, thank you for your willingness to help, to help in this area. Because it is really hard to find another X amount of dollars. But we made the commitment, and so we have to stand with you and, um, and never, never fail children.
Ms. Rogers?
Okay, I'm gonna make a quick, I guess, statement. Um, I think my biggest concern right now is that we have in sort of separating the two, elementary and secondary out, because we have, by the numbers, a successful elementary and a not yet successful secondary. What my concern is, is that we come back and say, we're at the seventy-five percent we need, but we're at a hundred percent elementary and fifty percent secondary, which then is not actually a successful secondary. Does that make sense? And so I feel like we need to concentrate our efforts on where the success needs to be, and not ask, like, not have our already successful program inflating or propping up a program that's not being as successful. I wanna make sure if we're doing this, that we have success at both sites, and we're not just using the elementary site to prop up the secondary site. That's my comment.
Mr. Cummings?
As I read through it, I'm just thinking, you know, what, you know, power there is when you invest in the youth, um, in our kids' education, in after-school activities, in their social, emotional, and well-being. And so I guess just for our next steps, for a deeper dive, I would just love to see some of the extra components at a higher level detail of what makes this program remarkable and excellent, um, and just kinda just dive into some of those, like, tidbits and pieces. So I think it's phenomenal, having worked with first-generation college students and college access programs, to hear stories of folks getting, you know, full rides to college, and how that can actually impact the long-term of generational, you know, wealth and economic empowerment. And so it's exciting to hear that, and it's exciting to hear how I think students have a bright future, and like, I think other folks here, you know, if I was a parent, I'd be like, my kid could get a full ride to college. All right, let's like, think this through a little more and see if we could get them there, uh, in that, at school. So thank you so much for sharing today, and look forward to just learning some more about the extracurricular materials and, um, just kind of, kind of that mission criteria too as well. So thank you.
Absolutely. We'll be sure to provide this.
Mr. Bowen Steele?
Um, I just wanted to say that the Lynn Haven Middle School Achievable Dream Academy is my adopted school, so I was very excited to hear you all come and present that. But you had mentioned something about touring the school. I was just wondering if tomorrow would be a good day.
Yes.
All right, sounds great. Thank you.
We're setting up school visits from the dais here. Ms. Dwyer?
I, I just, um, because I'm hearing all this for the first time, how much money do we need? What is, is that one fifty thousand what you're looking for right now, today?
Approximately one hundred and fifty thousand to increase, which again pays for one bus and one bus driver. Uh, it could be less, depending on exactly where those buses have to go to pick up those kids.
Is it possible we could do something creative for those maybe parents that don't work to offer to do some kind of carpooling? I don't know.
So, you know, it, I, I, I love the idea. The challenge is liability. Yes.
Okay, so now that everyone's had the chance to speak, I have a few questions. Um, so I, I really, I'm curious about the difference between the elementary and the middle high school. And so, um, it is my understanding that the C-TAC Achievable Dream Academy, the elementary school, those are students that live in the zone or applied, correct? So the students that are zo, kind of live geographically near C-TAC Elementary are, are zoned to that school, and if they don't wanna go to that school, they go to Bird Neck. Is that accurate? So we kind of have a little bit of a different dynamic for how students end up in the school environment for elementary that I, I think is also helping, kind of leads to perhaps a little bit more enrollment there. But, um, you know, I, I just, and I also wanted to go back, um, all the way to October twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, um, when the school board had a comprehensive report on the Achievable Dream Academy, and it said that eighty-eight students had opted out that were zoned for C-TAC. Um, do we have the number of students that were zoned that opted out and then went to Bird Neck Elementary instead at this particular time? Or is that information we can get?
We could get that information.
Okay, that, that's information that I would, um, I would like to have. Um, and you know, I, I do think that the merits of some of what has been presented is really great. I, I am going to say, I personally, um, I have some concerns after all of the research that, not that there's a problem with the program, but that I think that we're probably gonna be coming back and having this conversation a- again and coming to the table. And so while it's a hundred and fifty thousand additional dollars on top of, um, what we're spending, and, you know, if our students are getting full rides, and that's a guarantee, a- and that's the question. I don't, I don't think it's a guarantee, is it?
No, and it's not a guarantee for a full ride from any university. We work with them, and I believe the, the, specifically what I had shared in my slide was, we work to make sure finances aren't a barrier to them proceeding with that next step. Um, now at those partner universities, we're really able to work with them to close that, that gap. Um, and so from those universities, they, that is the case.
Okay, so removal of that barrier could include student loans and, and other stuff um, that these students are taking on. So I, I do think that's, um, an important feature to just note for me personally. And then, um, so I, I also would be very interested to see what our current zoning looks like, um, and what, what we're adding. So I'd like to see what we have currently, and where we're trying to go. Um, and then maybe where we started before we added last time, and just that I can kinda get the whole picture, since I wasn't on the board at the time that this started, um, just so that I can do my due diligence there. So those would be my couple of questions, and Ms. Melnick?
So, Dr. Robertson, we, so Achievable Dream is asking for an increase to expand its program. If the board does not agree to expand that program, are, are we facing the dissolution of this school?
Well, so we're not. Um, right now, without an expansion, we do have roughly two hundred applicants for next year. We're, we need to get at least sixty. Um, we, we're looking for this expansion in this particular area because we feel like the students that, that are in this area, there are going to be a number of viable candidates. And because they're clustered together, we could do it at a limited expense of one, one driver and a bus.
So let me, I'm sorry to interrupt you-
And then to, go ahead.
The applicants that we have now, the two hundred applicants, are from where? In the current zone?
Not all from the current zone. For example, I think we got- Yes, we, we have sixteen from Loxborough. We have, and I'm just gonna read off some of these. I mean, they're from all over the city.
Okay, that's what I, okay, I'm sorry, Dr. Robertson, keep going.
Yeah, and but I think it's the second part of your question, Ms. Melnick, that would it lead to the dissolution of Achievable Dream? It would not. In the MOA with the board and between the board and Achievable Dream, if either entity wanted to dissolve the partnership, then they have to make that vote, make that decision, and give the other entity twelve months.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that's it, so thank you very much. This will be up for action at our next formal meeting. And that brings us to our, trying to find the title of it here. Response to School Closures Presentation with Dr. Robertson.
So thank you, uh, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Wiens, members of the board. It's unusual for me to be doing an information night, but okay. For the first time in several years, we had not one snow event, but two snow events that, that, uh, cost us five instructional days. Um, thankfully, we were able to, uh, create asynchronous learning days based upon the requirements of the Virginia Department of Education that with board approval can be counted towards the one hundred and eighty-day requirement. Um, and so that's, that's the first thing we're gonna talk about. The second thing we're gonna talk about is, and this, this is gonna be less popular with, with some individuals, um, there, there is really no substitute for, uh, in-person learning. And our students lost five days of in-person learning with a phenomenal teaching staff. And even despite our best efforts to provide meaningful learning experience through asynchronous, it's really not a substitute. So the second part of my proposal, that what I'm gonna show in a moment, is there are two early release days planned that are coming up, March thirteenth and April third. Those days were approved by the board because we really felt like teachers needed additional time to plan as a result of the challenges with the Virginia Department of Education's new, uh, Virginia Literacy Act, really particularly to elementary and middle. And so the board was gracious enough to grant four early release days. We've used two, we have two left. Um, in good conscience, as the instructional leader of this school division, I really think the board needs to consider whether we need to keep those as early release days and return those to full staff days. When we do early release days, and I'm a fan of early release days when they're, when they're done appropriately, we do have students, particularly in our, our cat, our Advanced Technology Center and Technical Career Education Center and Environmental Studies Program, who are now, or if they're afternoon students, they lose that day. We don't adjust the schedule for those programs. So if you're an afternoon student at ATC or the Tech Center or your program's in the afternoon at Brock Center, you just don't go on that day. Uh, so there is a group of kids that, that are, that suffer that day. So if you can go to the next slide, because it do not have a clicker, I have two proposals here uh, for this board to consider, uh, and I know it's information tonight, it'll be for, for action on the eleventh. But the first one is, is that administration is seeking school board approval to count the five asynchronous learning days on January twenty-third, twenty-four, and February nineteen through twenty-one towards the Virginia Department of Education Remote Learning Day provision to meet the one hundred day requirement. What that means is that we will not have to utilize any staff days, any holidays, any extended days to, uh, meet that requirement. And then the second part is, again, administration is seeking school board approval to change the March thirteenth and April third early rest day schedule for students back to a full day. And this request is made based on the loss of in-person instructional time as a result of school closures as noted above. So I'm prepared to answer any questions, but that's the two recommendations from administration.
No, um, so colleague here to my left just asked if we're voting on this today. There was no motion or second to move this to action, and I believe it would take seven votes at this point if it were to move to action tonight because the agenda was adopted. Is that correct, Ms. Lanetti? Okay. Um, so we are voting on this at our next school board meeting, um, based on the fact that nobody even made a motion. I think that's fair, but is there any questions? Ms. Rogers?
Um, so for part one, I, I, I feel like these are two separate things. So for part two, I know that our staff were required to have office hours, and that the principals dropped in on those office hours, the students attended the office hours. While it is not the same as in-person learning, it is still work for the staff. It is still work for the students, and my own children will tell you, they definitely worked over the snow days and not willingly. Um, the other thing, though, that I did wanna say is that, um, because we have a hundred and eighty-one or eighty-day calendar, it was brought up that we are in our seats. They have, our students have almost a week more seat time based on that calendar. So I, I don't know that I am feeling taking away the two staff, uh, half-days that we agreed that they needed. Does that make sense? Because I feel like the kids were working, the staff were, were working, uh, during the snow time. While it's not the same as in-person, it was still work. They were still doing the work. The students were doing the work. And these two half-days are still needed. So that's kind of, I guess, the comments. I don't really think I have the question, sorry.
Ms. Melnick?
I would, I would normally agree with you. However, in this case, the point you made about the ATC students and I think about the Governor's School kids and the fact that those students miss five days of rehearsals um, for their upcoming show, um, and those students rely on transportation. And without school transportation to those programs, they just can't show up. Some kids at Governor's School want, they will just get in the car and go, just to show up. Um, but there are a lot of kids that don't have the luxury of that transportation to those programs. And so because they've already missed five days, um, that, that's what's bringing me pause on this one and, and agreement with the superintendent this time.
Thank you. No, I just wanted to ask, was the Governor's School open during the snow days? Okay, that, that's just was my question. I do know that my own child is a musician, and during inclement weather, he was practicing at home, had his music, had his instrument. I know it's not the same as having a full orchestra. Again- Again, it was five days, so.
My po, my point, Dr. Robertson, was, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cummings.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay. Um, Mr. Cummings?
I think, um, I'm trying to understand what the, what criteria we would be looking at from an outcomes perspective to want to make a calendar change to say that, you know, if we do X, this will improve the experience for the, for the student, for the student learning performance based on the missed snow, based on the snow days and the asynchronous learning, or the async learning. So I'd be kind of curious, you know, is there gobs of missing assignments? Do we see lack of, you know, work being submitted? Um, do we see detrimental like, uh, grades and things like that? Um, my major concern is that, you know, as a board, we've received a lot of emails um, in the past week and I encourage folks to keep on communicating. Where staff are definitely communicating that they are feeling the heat of administration work. And I know that we earmarked these this time, um, or well, I wasn't because I wasn't here when we voted on the previous calendar. But the time was marked so that they can do their professional learning development. I'm a little hesitant to want to change, to vote to change and take away that time from them because I think there's, yes, we, you know, could potentially touch more students within in-person learning. But, you know, a teacher that doesn't have time to adequately prepare, you know, those are things that I would be thinking about how they would potentially be facing, um, you know, burnout when they have that time earmarked for catching up on grading or, you know, doing the things that they had planned previously. So those are kind of my thoughts going into this and probably a little bit of what we hear more about.
So I would, I would offer to you, Mr. Cummings, uh, I can't give you any quantitative data oh, as a response in terms of what's the impact of, um, whether or not we do or don't on the early release days. But I can give you some, some data related to programming. And, and as I noted, those students that attend those afternoon programs and those pro, and, and ATC, Tech Center, Environmental Brock S- Center, Governor's School of for the Arts, they would have to provide their own transportation. All the other programs would not meet for those two days. And I do not want any teacher to feel like I'm saying, well, you, you didn't work on those asynchronous days. I am not saying that. I'm saying you were so good that there's no substitute for kids being in your classroom, receiving direct instruction from you as much as humanly possible, given our, our expectations of excellence as a school division. Now, there is one challenge if we wait till March 11th. If we wait until March 11th to vote, then I'm going to amend this to eliminate March 13th. Because I, then I think it's, it's a poor decision to make a vote on a Tuesday to change the schedule on a Thursday. So if we can't get the vote tonight, and I understand we can't, then the recommendation will come only to address April 3rd and not to address March 13th.
All right, Ms. Melnick?
And that, that was my point. So I don't, I do not want to relive a, a last-minute change. But in, I'm sorry, I know I'm, you know, falling out of favor with, with some. But we've, we've missed five days of in-person learning. And I can tell you, as a GSA mom, none of the other programs, but as a GSA mom, it, it's that seven days of in-person, and that has to be in-person instruction. Um, I worry about our environmental science students. I think we, I think somebody should make a motion. Or I, if, if I would like to make a motion to, um, have this added to the action item of the agenda. I know it's gonna take seven votes for that.
Ms. Melnick has made a motion to move this to action as well, seconded by Mr. Callen. Um, and while, um, while Madam Clerk, sorry, um, enters that in, um, Ms. Lanetti, does it require seven votes now to move it to action? Or does it just require seven votes at the point of action? How many votes does this require?
I think it's the changing your agenda that requires the seven votes.
Right.
So the next one, if you vote to change it, your agenda to add it on, that's some vote. After that, it's just a regular majority vote if that, because the second vote is to go ahead and vote on it tonight.
Okay, so just for purposes of clarification, this will require seven votes to move to action at this time, once we vote. Um, with it properly motioned and seconded, Ms. Dwyer, do you have any discussion about the motion? No. Okay. Let me know when you're ready. All right, any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, when the voting board's ready, we will vote.
This is just to move it to action.
Just moving it to action.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have eight ayes and two nays. So the motion did pass to move the recommendations to action for further discussion and vote.
Okay, thank you. So we will come back to this at action if anyone has any comments at that time. You can most certainly make them. We're, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. And when we get to Action C, we will get to that question. So we, I'm gonna read the consent agenda items. Fine Arts in Our Schools Month, National Women's History Month, VSBAs Students in Schools in Challenging Environments Month, National School Social Work Week, Read Across America, and First Colonial High School Roof Replacement. Is everybody okay with voting on the consent agenda as presented? I call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Mr. Bowenseal, seconded by Ms. Melnick. Now, I need to read those. Who has Fine Arts in Our Schools Month?
Sorry. Whereas, fine arts program in Virginia Beach City Public Schools provide curricular, co-curricular, and extracurricular experiences in art, dance, music, and theater arts for all student members of the school community and for the Virginia Beach community at large. And whereas, the school board of the City of Virginia Beach recognizes the importance of fine arts to all our students, not only while they are in school, but also throughout their lives. And whereas, art, dance, music, and theater arts are now and have been a vital part of the curriculum and instruction of the public schools of Virginia Beach. And whereas, the month of March has been designated as Music in Our Schools Month, Youth Art Month, and Theater in the Schools Month by their national associations. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach recognizes the month of March 2025 as Fine Arts in Our Schools Month in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach expresses its appreciation to our fine arts educators for enhancing our lives and the lives of our children through art, dance, music, and theater arts. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board adopted by the school board, City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, this 25th day of February 2025.
It disappeared. I'm supposed to be doing, here it is. Okay, so a resolution for National Women's History Month, March 2025. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made a star contributions to the growth and strength of our school division, communities, and nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation that are still evident today. And whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, creating a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, despite the significant contributions to education, business, military, and healthcare, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the month of March 2025 as National Women's History Month. And be it further resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens to support and recognize women in both the public and private sectors who providing healing and hope for the betterment of all throughout the community. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board. Adopted by the school board of the City of Virginia Beach this 25th day of February 2025.
Resolution. VSBAs Students in Schools in Challenging Environment Month, March 2025. Whereas, challenging environments in school have become increasingly signi- significant area of concern in the United States and Virginia. And whereas, the code of the Commonwealth of Virginia through the acts of the legislative, executive, and judicial branches acknowledges geographical and local challenges with funding public education and seeks to remedy disparities across the state. And whereas, we recognize that factors including, but not limited to disability, race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status have a demonstrated history of impacting the education opportunities provided to a student. And whereas, the promise of public education is for every child to be successful in school and life. And whereas, it is important for Virginia Beach families, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of the diverse needs and strength of learners and to encourage discussion of the challenges and opportunities as a school community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the month of March 2025 as VSBAs Students in Schools in Challenging Environments Month. And it will be further resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens to advocate and increase awareness about the supports necessary to improve Virginia Beach challenged school environments. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of the board adopted by the school board of the City of Virginia Beach this 25, 25th day of February 2025.
Resolution, National School Social Worker Week, March 2nd through 8th, 2025. Whereas, the week of March 2nd through 8th, 2025 is set aside to honor the contributions school social workers have made to help identify and remove environmental barriers to learning, thus allowing students to reach their full potential. And whereas, Virginia Beach City Public School social workers are committed to mobilizing family, school, and community resources to enable students to learn and fully benefit from their educational program. And whereas, school social workers are valuable members of the multi-disciplinary team serving schools, providing a wide range of services to students, parents, and staff. And whereas, social workers use their expertise in child development, community resources, mental health, and crisis intervention to develop and implement interventions to support educational success. And whereas, social workers assist the most vulnerable children and adolescents, including children with disabilities, children living in homelessness, children living in poverty, pregnant teens, suicidal teens, truants, and other at-risk children. And whereas, the shared approach to assisting students promotes students' learning and helps guide students to high school graduation and post-secondary experiences with the skills necessary to be productive citizens. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach recognize the second full week of March 2025 as National School Social Worker Week in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board adopted by the school board in the City of Virginia Beach this 25th day of February 2025.
Read Across America Resolution, March 3rd, 2025. Whereas, the citizens of Virginia Beach stand firmly committed to promoting reading as the catalyst for our students' future academic success, their preparation for America's jobs of the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy. And whereas, Virginia Beach City Public Schools has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education of our youth, grounded in the principle that education investment is the key to the community's well-being and long-term quality of life. And whereas, National Education Associations Read Across America, a national celebration of reading on March 3rd, 2025, motivates students to read a variety of literature that are about everyone for everyone. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach calls on all citizens of Virginia Beach to assure that every child is in a safe place reading together with a caring adult on March 3rd, 2025. And be it further resolved that this body enthusiastically endorses NEAs Read Across America and recommits our community to engage in programs and activities that improve the reading abilities of all children. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board adopted by the school board of the City of Virginia Beach this 25th day of February 2025.
All right, I call for a vote to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass for the consent agenda, it was approved.
Thank you. I call for a motion to approve the personnel report and administrative appointments for February 11th, 2025 as presented. Moved by Dr. Green, seconded by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote to approve personnel report as presented.
So Madam Chair, excuse me, we have, uh, 10 ayes. So the motion did pass for the approval of the February 25th, 2025 Personnel Report and Administrative Appointment.
Okay, so we are now on to Action B, which is...
We have an administrative appointment.
Oh, you have one, okay.
Yeah, so I'm pleased that you've approved our recommendation for Brittany Gulick, currently an admin assistant at Bayside and Luxford Elementary Schools to be the next Assistant Principal at Glenwood Elementary School. Thank you.
Okay, so we are now on to B. Um, and Madam Clerk, I don't know if you need time to enter this in. This is the motion, uh, for the hearing officer. Okay. I call for a motion to approve Ed Jones.
I call for a motion to approve Ed Jones to serve as the Hearing Officer for the Student Discrimination Complaint Appeal filed by a Princeton Middle School parent in February 2025. Moved by Dr. Green, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none. Oh, you have some discussion? This was from closed. All right. Seeing none, I call for a vote.
So Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Okay, thank you very much. So now we are on the motions for action makeup plan. This is going to be a two-part motion, one for the asynchronous days. The second one is going to be for the full days, early release change to the calendar. So the first one is, do I have a motion to count, to accept the five asynchronous learning days on January 23rd, 24th, February 19th through 21st towards the VDOE Remote Learning Day Provision to meet the 180-day requirement? Moved by Ms. Rogers, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion on the remote learning days? Seeing none, I call for a vote to approve the five asynchronous learning days.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes and one nay. So the motion did pass to count those five asynchronous learning days on January 23rd and 24th, and February 19th, 20th, and 21st.
Point of order, Clerk, I did not mean to hit that nay. I was looking at two, three things at one time.
Ms. Felton, can you approve, can you verify that you wanted an aye?
I do want an aye. Prove that I do want an aye.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we're going to correct that. We have 10 ayes, and the motion did pass.
All right, I will now accept a motion to approve the change for March 13th and April 3rd early release day schedule for students to a full day. This request is made based on the loss of in-person instructional time. Motion made by Ms. Weems, seconded by Mr. Bowen Steele. Discussion, Ms. Rogers.
Okay, first, I wanted to point out that the April 3rd date is the day before report cards are due, which is on April 4th at 2:00. Our educators have asked for that half day in order to get the report cards prepared for our students and out in time. That is the reason why we had that calendared. So that is number one. And number two, I wanted to just add that it's really important that we not only show our teachers that we appreciate them with words, but with action. And so this is why I would request or be in favor of keeping those two half-days in place. Thank you.
If I can just, to Ms. Rogers' point, she makes a very good point about April 3rd. But April 4th is a staff day. So teachers don't, there are no students in school on April 4th. They're just, instead of getting a early release day on the 3rd, they would be a full day. But they do have April 4th as a staff day to get grades done.
That is good. Ms. Weems?
Yes, thank you. I mean, this is obviously a tough decision, but, you know, I've said this for 22 years, and I've been blasted sometimes for voting or saying it a certain way, but I'll say it again. If we have to make a choice, I always go for the student and his or her academics first. And sometimes it's so close, and sometimes that choice inconveniences many. But I think that just, can we say going to school, an extra half-day is going to make the world of difference? I don't know if we can say that, but I think we can say for sure 100% face-to-face, in-person learning for our students is by far the best. We've learned that a few years ago. And we have gone from, you know, 183 days to 182, to 181, to 180. Now we've missed, you know, two or three days for snow. Now it went up to five. Now, some of our students are missing seven days within, what, a month? That is huge. And I think that we just, we, I just don't want to get in the mindset that, oh, asynchronous, you know, works, so if it happens again, you know, we'll do two or three more days, and then two or three more days. So I ask my colleagues that, to vote for these two days for our students to be in front of his or her teachers, face-to-face learning. I am so sorry, teachers, that it is going to inconvenience for that, inconvenience you for that half-day. We cannot help that we got hit with that snowstorm. But I think that for me personally, I'm going to always go on the side of what gets our students in that building in front of our great teachers who make a difference in that student's learning. So I will be supporting this.
Mr. Cummings?
I will be joining Ms. Rogers and keep wanting to vote for the half-days. I think when I'm, I definitely hear what folks are saying in the sense of wanting our students to have the best possible outcomes. And I strongly believe, you know, our students learn the best when our staff are treated the best as well. But I also think it's hard for me to see this decision of changing half to a full based on evidence that's before me. And so for me, that's really what I think the decision is, what I'd heavily weigh on, is I know that face-to-face is the preferred method. And I know that, I mean, seeing my own sons, my kids struggle in, you know, ac象 environments, snow days, all those things. I definitely could hear some concerns around that. I just don't know if changing from a half to a full necessitate what the actual academic outputs will be for that change to justify such, I think will definitely impact our staff in a negative way. So I, I think in future, I'd love to have more data in front of me when making decisions about, you know, specifically around decisions that impact not just our students, but also our parents who might have had things planned that day, our staff who might have had things also planned that day as well. So those are just my quick, immediate thoughts on this topic.
Thank you. We're going to have Ms. Melnick speak first since Ms. Rogers has had the opportunity.
Mr. Delaney, do you know off the top of your head how many students are in afternoon programs that will miss out ATC, Environmental Science?
Goodness, you look at Environmental Studies programs, 100 kids. I'm going to be way off here, but it's a significant number at the ATC in the afternoon program. You're probably looking a couple hundred.
Okay, and then at Career and Tech?
Similar, similar numbers, you know, to like Mr. Cummings' point, for example. For those students, it is a significant, five days, a significant amount of instructional time regarding the trades that they're working through.
Except it'll be seven.
Yeah, I'm sorry, seven when you...
So that's what I worry about. Otherwise, I'm all in on the half-days. But it's seven days for them of misinstruction. And the Governor's School, that's a couple of hundred also. We have the largest number of students that attend the Governor's School, so the impact is, is great actually, and really very unfair to the students who are in those afternoon programs. As much as I want to give them the half-day, I feel much better knowing that there's a staff day on the April 4th. I feel much better about that. And I don't typically fight this way. I'm always pro-teacher and doing everything I can to support our teachers. But seven days is a lot, and a half-a-day is better than a full-day makeup somewhere else. And so I'm glad that the first one passed, that we were able to use asynchronous days for those, for those days. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Rogers?
Okay, first question, what time are report cards due on April 4th?
We give them, we say no earlier than 2:00. We give flexibilities to principals if they're saying their staff needs a little more time from that from a DOT perspective. It's 5:00 is when those have to be done. You may be referring to, we sent information out earlier in the year that said grades need to be done by 2:00. No later than, no, earlier than 2:00 was the message that got conveyed that it had to be at 2:00. So we worked with many of our principals to say, you can extend that window. The intent of our time on that, with that discussion was what Dr. Robertson meeting with teacher groups saying, I don't want anybody being told they got to submit grades at 10, 11 o'clock. So we've made that correction even at the end of term two, that there's opportunities for teachers if they need that additional time.
Okay, and, and I'm asking...
If you have a teacher that has that concern, we can certainly work on...
Plenty, I'm, my phone is going crazy, but that's besides the point. The other question, or I guess comment I was going to make is that when I had asked with regard to the budget about our youngest learners not having one-to-one access to their devices and cutting back on that, one of the reasons given in favor of it is for asynchronous learning. And so it's kind of a juxtapose, I suppose, that one hand, we're saying asynchronous learning, the devices are needed for that. And on the other hand, but it's not the same as, you know, in-person learning, so we have to take away already calendared days. Do you see, like, it can't be both. So I, I, I'm really struggling here with that, that we're using, paying for one-to-one devices for, because we need them for asynchronous days. But then when we use our asynchronous days as allotted by the state, then that's not good enough instruction, so let's take away staff days and days that they need. And so that's where I'm really struggling here, because again, our students did work. So did our staff on those five days. Those days are not, days not done any work. Those are not days that nothing was done. Students practiced at home their music. Students practiced their lines if they were, you know, in a, at one of the academies for the arts. All of those things still happened while they were at home. They all had work to do. So this is where I'm just kind of struggling with, why are we paying for one-to-one if every single time we have an asynchronous day? Then it's just not good enough. That's all.
Dr. Green?
Thank you. I am going to come from the perspective of social, emotional. First of all, I am appreciative of our wonderful staff, what they do beyond our duty days, 24/7 weekends. And I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge, out of heart, everyone worked when we were working remotely during the snow. However, I just read a resolution for school social workers. And that resolution focuses a lot on a lot of our kids that many of you may not have had an opportunity to meet or see or visit them at an oceanfront hotel like I have and some of my former colleagues sitting out there. School is the best part of their day. They, they look forward to coming to school. I also look at it from an educator's perspective with the learning as well. I want kids in school not only to meet their social, emotional needs, but also to meet their academic needs, such as some of the programming that we heard about this evening. It's hard having to pull those days if that is what the board decides on, but, but I will support our, our kids being in school those two half-days because it's needed for many reasons as already stated and many that are not.
Mr. Bowen Steele?
I guess I didn't want to talk. I just wanted to say I appreciate Ms. Weems and Ms. Melnick's input on this. And then now that Ms. Green, Dr. Green has spoken, I also appreciate the way she laid it out, and I'm definitely agreeing that the children need to be in school on those two days. Thank you.
Hold on, put your, turn your microphone on. Mr. Cummings?
We have a point of information. Are those days A-days, B-days for middle school, high school? Are they both, are they both going to be A-days? Are they both going to be B-days?
We're looking.
Ms. Felton?
Thank you. Who would have thought 10 to 12 inches of snow? I thought it was all over when, when we had the first three days. I really did. And when I saw it coming down, I knew that we as a board would be between a rock and a hard place because we do, like Dr. Green has said, the social and emotional needs of our children. There were others calling our kids need to be in school and something, I want to be there. And if you go around and see, there are some principals that say that sometime they regret seeing the weekend because they don't know how their children are coming back for that week with all that they've been through. Their principal's saying this as well. I want my teachers and my instructors and custodian staff, all those who know that I really care about their work. I sit it above everything that any division does, and you do it well. Bus drivers, you do it well. But when it comes to the education of our children and, and them getting what they need, I'm, we're in between a rock and a hard place. And I look at the greater good. And the greater good is, were we going to vote tonight for the administration for those April, March 14th, March 13th, and April 3rd? I do appreciate my teachers and all that they do, especially, you showed yourself absolutely phenomenal during COVID. You were awesome. There were many challenges there, but you did an awesome job. And I know you did one this past, about three days ago. So please know that I do care about my teachers, my staff, employees, but it's a greater good situation for me right now.
Madam Chair, I have an answer. It's 1A, 1B.
Thank you. Okay, so I've, I've kind of been listening, you know, as my colleagues weighed in, and I will say that my, my knee-jerk reaction kind of was, you know, I, I really want our staff to know that we appreciate them. And so my concern is, is that too. But I also agree with the other comments, and I start to think back to COVID learning, and, you know, there really is, even though I'm appreciative of all the work our staff did, there is no substitute for face-to-face learning. I think of my own kindergartner, especially when we get into younger age students. It's been very difficult for us to get back into a cadence since we've gotten back to school January 6th, and we've had two snow events. We've had, I'm looking here at the calendar, we've had off scheduled time, January 20th. We had staff days, the 24th and the 25th of January. We had that staff day, February 17th. And then you have all of the snow days in the mix. And so had we been voting on this two weeks from now, I, I don't think I would have been able to have supported it because of the two-days-later thing. But I think that it is important that our students are in person, and I just want to throw out there that my daughter's teacher did a really great job doing a positive uplifting educational experience in and out of the classroom on asynchronous and in the classroom every single day, so shout out to her. But Dr. Robertson, I do have a question for you. When our students were on these half-days, which this was an added half-day for letters training, were those in-person half-days, or were they able to leave and do that work at home?
No, the staff schedule did not change. The students went home early, the staff stayed in the schools and worked until their contract day was over.
Okay, so their, their schedule is not going to change?
Their schedule will not change.
Okay, because that makes a big difference for me. All right, well, I see no more discussion, so I call for a vote to approve the change, to change March 13th and April 3rd early release days to a full day.
So Madam Chair, we have eight ayes and two nays. So the motion did pass to change the March 13th and April 3rd early release days scheduled for students to a full day.
Thank you. That brings us to committee, organization, or board reports. Does anyone have anything to report? Vice Chair Weems?
Yes, the new PRC with three new members just met right before this meeting at 2:00 today. Ms. Felton and Mr. Bowen Steele, great job. And we will meet again March... March 19th. Of course, March 19th. And we, and the next School Board meeting, we will be bringing back some policies for you guys. Thank you. Thank you.
Reminder, we do have legislative tomorrow at 1:00. Okay, so there is a legislative committee tomorrow, and there will be a vote on the chair at that meeting, so I'm just going to go ahead and mention it at this time. What time is that at? At 1:00 P M. So that's tomorrow. And I have a couple of tickets here left for the oyster roast with the Virginia Beach Education Foundation. They do a lot of great things. This supports the grants for teachers. They also host the Teacher of the Year banquet. All right, there we go. Ready to go. Sold! All right, and with that, it is 8:29 P M., and this meeting is now adjourned.